I'm calling the meeting to order. Let the record show that Councilmember Alvarez is not present at the time. Thank you all for coming out tonight to our council meeting. We will have the invocation by Mr. Don Smith and we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jessica Gonzalez.
Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to attend this meeting tonight. I think most of you know the Lord's Prayer. For it says, "Thy will be done," part of it. It's not talking about Don Smith's will or your will, but God's will. How much better would our world be if people followed that? And then in the Lord's Prayer, it talks about our trespasses and even more important, forgiving those who trespass against us. Again, how much better would it be if we were like Jesus and we forgave people for the things they do against us? Let us listen tentatively, tentatively tonight to the city council meeting as they try to do our work. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Councilwoman Gonzalez. Thank you. We will now have the approval of the agenda. Would you push if you...oh, it's not working.
Madam Mayor, I'm moving. We approve the agenda.
Councilmember Board?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary.
PR 23020, Colleen Starr Award.
Once again, good afternoon, everyone. Councilwoman, Mayor Protem, could you please come over here? Tonight, we're going to present the Starr Awards. The Starr Award is for an individual that have done significant things throughout the community. And today, we had the opportunity to see some significant things at the Public Works Department Appreciation Day. And that's just going beyond what a normal citizen would do. And this month, Council Mayor Protem Cobb will be presenting to that selected individual.
Tonight for Starr Award 2023 from District Three is Ms...is Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams? Jaliqua?
This is a young lady. So many times, the worst thing that I think that I have ever seen is to see another man put another man down instead of helping them, instead of giving good words and good deeds. I hope that with this youthful Starr Award recipient, that we learn tonight that we don't put a man down. We help them. We lift them up. We don't write about them. We don't put them on movies. We lift a man up. And this is what Ms. Officer Williams has done. Okay, Ms. Williams was born to Colleen and Colleen to our veterans Frankie and Darlene Williams. Ms. Williams graduated from Ellison High School in 2017, then went on to graduate magna cum laude from Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. The night when we said that all lives matter, I looked out into the crowd and there were three people. There was Jaliqua, there was her sister, and there was her brother. Dr. King tells us, "An injustice anywhere, it's an injustice everywhere." She was fighting. She had a little sign. Her sister was taking a picture. She quietly walked. When we talk about humbleness, when we leave, I see Ms. Williams. No, Ms. Williams is not an old lady. No, she's not over forty. She's not even over thirty. But an injustice anywhere, it's an injustice everywhere. When I see her, she's lifting. She's helping. And that means the world. Let me tell you, they asked her, "What organizations does she begin with that she belonged to?" She didn't list organizations at all. She said, "I love to help my community. Do you know how many times I've walked past her when no one's looking?" See, people see you when no one is looking. When you think no one is looking, everybody is looking. I've seen you. I've seen you at Prayer in the Park. I've seen you reading. I've seen you working with the ministries, trying to get singles...I say get singles married, but that's not what they're doing. They're having...they're meeting each other. I see you working. I see you doing those extra things. One day, you will guard over our homeland security because I believe...we're all familiar with Deion. Deion got this saying that, and I just love it, about, "I believe when you look good, you do good, you work good, and your team works good with you." So we're proud of you. Ms. Williams loved to serve in her church and give back to her community. Every chance she gets in her free time, she enjoys volunteering with different organizations around the city. She strongly believes in civic participation and understands the importance of it. Ms. Williams' volunteer efforts include Habitat for Humanity, Garden of Hope, a Western Texas, Feed the Five Thousand...I don't know what Feed the Five Thousand is, but I'm gonna find out. Park cleanups at Mickey's Dog Park and more. She credits her parents for instilling values. I just have to tell y'all, thank you. I hope that every...I hope that every youthful friend and every person that comes in contact with you learn your humbleness. You don't have a title, but when you walk in the room, you command attention. You command attention because your heart is good. And don't let nobody tell you that your heart can't take you where you need to go. I love to see this young lady working. She credits her parents for instilling values in her, especially to have faith in God. You know what? I've never heard her say a negative word about a person. I've heard her say, "You know, the paper was on the ground, so I helped the person pick up the paper on the ground." She never one time made a person lower than who they were. And I thank you for that. That'll take you a long way when we don't have people condemning and beating up and making people seem as if they're worse than what they are. Keep it going. Ms. Williams hopes to continue living up to this award and making a positive impact in the community. This is presented to you, Jaliqua, the Starr Award. Do you have something you want to say?
You all should see some of the things she does. I'd even name everything. I love to see people working and not talking. It means a lot. Work will win when wish and want. Sometimes we talk too much.
Um, I just want to say thank you, Councilwoman Cobb, for nominating me for this award. I thank God, honestly, for getting me this far. Someone I've known passed away yesterday, and I just saw him on Sunday. So just to live every moment, because you never know when tomorrow's not promised. So I just hope to continue living up to this award and just do many more things just to benefit the community. Thank you, guys.
Give her another round of applause. It takes a lot to go out in the community and make a positive impact, to assist others. And I'm very grateful for her gifts and her talents. Thank you, Mayor Protem. A citizen petitions. Madam Secretary.
CP 23024, Nigel Dunn, closure of homeless shelter concerns, Friends in Crisis.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I don't know if I can follow that. My name is Nigel Dunn, and I'm here as a concerned citizen about the closure of Friends in Crisis. I'm here with my friends, Ms. Francie, Ms. Anita, and Brother Vic. They are residing in the Friends in Crisis Center right now. The other concern about the closure, because the center is due to close and run out of money in February. I know that the Arbor of Hope is going to open up pretty soon, but we don't know when. I attended the meeting last week with the Arbor of Hope, but they don't know when they're going to open up. I know the funds are being allocated to the Arbor of Hope, but the funds are not being allocated to Friends in Crisis. The concern is, is that there's no transition period for the citizen to go, you know, from Friends in Crisis to the Arbor of Hope. In between that time, that it's going to close. So we need to know what's going to happen to the citizens when there's a closure between Friends in Crisis and the Arbor of Hope. Winter's coming up, it's getting cold, and we want to make sure that they're not on the street when this stuff happens. So we...Ms. Francie signed the petition. She's getting petition signed. We need to know the steps to where that needs to go. We need to know where we need to get funds from. Do we need to start a GoFundMe? What are the things we need to do to make sure that they are taken care of so they're not on the street during the wintertime? So those are my concerns, and I'm free to answer any questions. I think y'all know me from BUM, B-U-M. So...but I'm here as a concerned citizen today, not BUM.
Sir, have you had the opportunity to talk to Friends in Crisis Board?
I talked to the director over there, and a lot of information that I did get, I got from him. So they are...they may run out of money in February. So that's what I got from them, to my understanding.
Yes, sir. So they didn't have any solutions for the transition?
Not that I know of. And as far as I know, the transition is Arbor of Hope, but they haven't broke ground yet. So those are the answers that I got from him. I don't want to speak for him either, but those are...that's my understanding to the answers that I asked him, the questions I asked him.
Did you know if he was going to come before the council to speak to us? Or did they have any fundraisers? Did they put any grants into other organization? Do you know any of that?
From what I gather, ma'am, he didn't have any of those things. I even asked him if I could start a GoFundMe for him, and he said he didn't mind doing it.
Okay. Counsel, do anyone have any questions for him? Oh, I'm sorry, do. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Dunn, for your concern and for being here today. I don't think there's anybody in this room that would disagree the need that is served by this shelter. I can tell you, as someone who has served decades in various nonprofit boards, a lot of them similar to the Friends in Crisis, Habitat for Humanity, that the cities are not their main funding source, nor as they should be. Running a nonprofit is not easy. It's like running a church. Where you get your money to continue doing your mission comes from anywhere you can get it. And sometimes, that requires thinking outside of the box, trying to find sustainable funding options to complete that mission. As the mayor stated, we have not received any formal requests from the Friends in Crisis Shelter directly here to this council. I know that they'd applied for some CDBG funding, not directly, though, saying that this is their last-ditch effort. And even the money that they asked for CDBG was, what was it, twenty thousand dollars? Something like that. It wasn't...again, as someone who has served in a nonprofit, twenty thousand dollars is not going to get you where you need to be when you have staff and overhead to pay for. So again, I don't want the public to think that because they didn't get the CDBG funding is the reason that they're contemplating that they may not have to close. I do wish that their director or somebody was here to represent them that could maybe give us some more insight as to what's going on, if they've had some mismanagement of funds, or if they've been unable to get other grants that they've applied for. You know, a lot of considerations go into why nonprofits succeed or don't succeed.
The understanding that I have, sir, is that the funds that they were getting have been allocated towards Arbor of Hope. So they were receiving funds from the city, but now since everything is going to the Arbor of Hope, they don't have that funding anymore. And they need fifty thousand dollars per month to operate.
Correct, correct. So what they asked us for was a fraction of that. The city has never given them fifty thousand dollars a month. So again, this goes back to, we just need to get more information. Hopefully, you can encourage someone from Friends in Crisis, either their board or their executive director, to come to the city with a specific proposal, if they have one. We would evaluate it the way that we do with everyone else, but like we all know, that there are...there's lots of nonprofits in this city that are very worthwhile, whether it's the Greater Free Clinic or various others that serve a mission and a need, just as the Friends in Crisis do. And fortunately, that's not one of those things realistically where a city can fund all these different missions. I wish we could, but taxpayers probably wouldn't like what that tax rate would look like to make that happen. So it is important that we all work together, and hopefully, someone from Friends in Crisis will reach out, and we can do whatever we can to help.
And Councilmember Alvarez, the city have been trying to talk to them and try to see what the need is, and it will come before the council. But I agree, somebody from there on the board, they should have come. And what concerns me, one of the things you said, they gave you the questions to come before the council, and you are a concerned citizen. And I'm grateful that you came, because that shows what Mayor Protem Cobb just said, a heart of a servant. You know, you don't live there, but you care so much about the people that do live there. But that's just your ministry anyway, because you do it. It just comes natural for you. But you do have some more questions. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Again, my sentiment is shared with everything that you've done, and thank you for bringing it forward. I heard swirlings of rumors of this thing, but then when I started inquiring and asking these questions, I was not able to gather any more information, outside of the fact that I was told that they were awarded upwards of a million dollars in a recent grant. So that's causing me now additional concern and pause as to where this is coming from and why it was not presented to us in a formal manner, if that is truly the case. I'm not questioning you at all, sir. So madam, I just wanted to inquire with regards to this statement that he made about the Arbor of Hope and the funding. Arbor of Hope was not designed to be a homeless unhoused shelter. Is that correct? It was not designed for that purpose. So it's not a competing with this.
Yes, ma'am. But what he was saying, that the funding that they used to receive, it was going to Arbor of Hope.
No, that's not. Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I will continue to gather some information as well, but again, I would share that sentiment of the executive director coming to us and letting us know exactly what's going on, because obviously, we do care about our citizens in this community, but we need some clarity.
So is Arbor of Hope, is that a homeless shelter? Because my understanding that it is a homeless shelter, and when I had the meeting on last week, that's what they were speaking about it. That's how they were presenting it.
It will be a transitional community for the homeless, to transition out of homelessness.
Right, right.
Yes, sir. But it won't be a congregational shelter.
Right, right, right. But it's going to be somewhere where they can transition to another permanent home.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
You have some more questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you finished? Okay. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify what the mayor just said earlier, because you had mentioned Arbor of Hope and the funding that was taken away from the Arbor of Hope. And I just wanted to just get that point clarified, because I know that we talk about Arbor of Hope, and I'm glad that Mr. Adams clarified. This is a transition center. I know we've gone through this before when they were here. But when the homeless center did open, I know we had like two years, two cycles of CDBG grant money that we set aside to make sure that they got that initial funding that they needed to get started, just like what we're trying to do with Arbor of Hope. I don't think we've had any funding yet. I think we set something aside, right, but we haven't really funded it. So we're kind of doing the same thing with Arbor of Hope that we did with the homeless shelter. But once we get that going, it was up to them to just keep that funding. And I think every year, they do ask, as somebody mentioned, part of our CDBG, our block grants, and they get some funding from that. And so other than that, it's pretty much, it was understood that it's going to be up to them to figure out ways to funding. And I think you brought some good resources when you said like a FundMe account or something like that. And that's, I think, what we need to do to try to help them, get the community involved and see if we can do that. Otherwise, we've been through this before. It was several years ago where the people were sleeping outside the homeless shelter because, again, they went through that, funding shortages. And we don't want to keep doing this every three or four years. We have to have something that is going to keep them, sustain them through the long term. And I know that's a challenge. It's always going to be a challenge for them and the city. And whatever needs to be done outside of city council, you know, I'm there to help you out as much as I can.
You have another question. Mayor Protem Cobb.
I'm curious to know, did we know this ahead of time, or did this happen at the last minute, that we are told that we are not going to have anywhere?
He's not on the board.
Oh, you're not on the board. You don't know. You just came...I'm scared to question you, young man. Nigel, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you for helping.
Bringing the executive.
Thank you for helping. You can look at my eyes and know I was ready for...okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you know what? I want you to see love in my eyes, so I'm going to turn it off.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, sir, one of the things, and I thank you for coming, and the council have spoken some concerns that they have. And one of the things that I am looking into, I have a meeting scheduled with ministers, because when you have a nonprofit, it is very difficult if the board, in my opinion, responsibility is to ensure that it is funded. And you cannot get on certain boards unless you have that community contact where you can get resources to bring into whatever board or organization that you're on. And so that is the concern. And I think the former mayor, Segarra, I think he was mayor when they came before us, because same thing, they don't have funding. And this is October, and I think that's just five months. So I'm trying to...in my mind, I'm trying to wrap around, like, when do you start raising funds? Is it five months out, or is it a year out? Because someone has to manage the book, just like we have to manage the city budget. And so as the city attorney told me, that the city...they are working with the director, and they're having conversations. But I cannot speak for the council, but until that happened, they will get back with them to see what resources we can provide. We just completed our budget. So if you raised the alarm in October while we was in budget season, when we was in oppo funding, we had more than enough with oppo funding, and we didn't hear anything. So that is a concern of mine. But I do truly appreciate you and thank you for coming.
I just want to make sure that I'm not...
Ma'am, you are out of order. He has...no, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I'm the co-chairman of CD. I'm sorry.
Will you please take your seat? He has the floor.
I just want to make sure that y'all know that I'm not speaking for Friends in Crisis.
Your concern, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Bracy, we can do citizen comments. You can sign the form, because we're getting ready to go into citizen comments, and you can speak then. Madam Secretary, citizen comments. I was just waiting for everybody to go where they needed to go. And let the records show that Councilmember Alvarez was here before I called, right after the Starr Awards. He walked in before. All right. Citizen comments for individuals that not have had the opportunity to speak before the council. You have four minutes to speak, and the council have one minute to respond back to your question if they choose to. The first person, Nishan Price. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes. Good evening, sir.
I just have some questions to clarify, a lot of, to dispel questions and airs. So if you see item number eight and seven, are there any members, or yourself, with direct relation to these companies, or have friends that are investing in these companies, that are doing this work? So that's the question that I have with these things right here. So...and that's for any council member or their family members, involved with the family members or friends or anything of these two companies getting these bids.
Sir, I'm just trying to get a correction. Is that the Colleen Fort Hua Regional Airport you're talking about, seven and eight?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. The R&amp;L Global Inc., Engraver LLC. Actually, any company that's providing services to the city of Colleen, are there any members or their family members or friends that are involved with these companies? That's my essential question or air. So that's what I'm asking, is that any of the members can dispel that if they would like to. Item number eighteen is, I'm in opposition of spending any more money on this subject to encourage more marijuana sales or distribution of Delta Eight here in Colleen. We got enough of it already. So don't waste our tax dollars on the support of this proclamation of using marijuana. Just stop spending money. That's my whole thing. Stop spending money. Lower our tax debt, which is item number nineteen, right? If you're going to do anything, please lower our tax debt. Don't come up with new ideas, right? Don't annex more things. Get the infrastructure first, because my water... first, because my water pressure of my house is at 32 PSI, and it's not because of the plumbing issues, because the pumping issue, or the water issue, or that we've overgrown the infrastructure that we have. Not only that, the wa, you know, the flooding in my area, right? We're not fixing the drainage in my, in my zone, because we don't have the money for it, or we haven't studied the area enough. So, I'd like that foresight to be up and foremost in your minds, when you decide to have these ideas to spend money on things. With that said, I thank you for your time.
Yes. And sir, I wrote on your paper PH-23052. You spoke on it, so I just wrote it on here.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Melissa Brown. Good evening. You have four minutes.
I'd like to start off by clarifying a couple of things. There were some questions to the person having the citizen's petition regarding whether or not families in crisis or friends in crisis have tried doing their own fundraisers, which they have. They have attempted multiple, has been over the years, and has been very diligent over this past year, because for the past four years, the city of Colleen has not provided any funding out of CDBG. I just went back and checked through the entire records. This year, they requested $30,000, and they were recommended and approved for $0. So, I understand the concept of that's only a very small portion. There are two separate programs that we need to remember. Families in crisis and friends in crisis are ran separately. That money goes into two separate funds. It's just like the city of Colleen. We have multiple funds for the money that we bring in. So do they. We have redirected money to Arbor of Hope. Actually, we have $2 million set aside right now, out of our general fund for Arbor of Hope for the sprung shelter. The sprung shelter is for homeless people. It is for unhoused people to stay in while they get whatever it is, to be able to move into the transitional housing stage. It is similar to what we have over on Sprott right now. The difference is, this is going to be custom-built. It's not just going to be a renovated building. So, it's custom-built, which makes the difference. I will also tell you, in 2020, the city took $400,000 approximately out of CDBG, and set it aside for the Colleen program to end homelessness, a program that didn't exist at the time. I will also tell you that this year, there was 700, I'm sorry, $757,370.15 set aside in CDBG for a reunification center, which is an Arbor of Hope location. $94,134 for the Colleen reunification program, which will eventually be tied up into the reunification center. Our community engagement team requested $20,000 to help prevent homelessness. They were approved for $5,000. And to say that this should have been brought up during the budget, and the alarm should have been raised, is ridiculous, because if the council is listening to the citizens. I brought this up multiple times. I brought up all of these facts multiple times during the budget. I've also asked what's going to happen if and when the shelter does close. What are we doing then, because we don't even have anything set aside for a warming center for the winter? That has been brought up multiple times during the budget. To imply that this was just dropped on the city, and just dropped on the council out of the blue, is ridiculous. That implication is so far out of this world, that I can't even comprehend why it's something that's coming up. This is not the first time that it's happened. Prior to, the city was providing some funding, even if it's going to administrative costs to help pay for a salary for a person. That's $30,000 less that has to come out of operations to assist the homeless. But no, instead, we say, no, take care of it yourself. And all the money, county is also diverting money away from our local shelters, to put into Arbor of Hope, because this is a multi-unit, or multi-city program, and the county is involved. I know I only have a few seconds left, so I want to add in a couple other things. Item number six, I think it is extremely important that we support the meet and confer agreement. This is something the council has given the privilege to the officers, and given them the ability to sit down and say, this is what we're requesting, and negotiate out what would be best. People don't leave jobs because of the money. They leave because of...
Your time is up. Thank you.
May I please have one extra moment from the council members?
Councilmember Alvarez, Councilmember Gonzalez, Solomon, you weren't even here. Yes or no? That's one, no, yes? Councilmember Solomon, is that a no or yes, to continue the talk?
I'm asking for one minute.
There's two noes right there, for one minute. Councilwoman, Mayor Protem? Councilmember Sagara, no. So, you have it. Yes.
Thank you very much. So, we gave the authority and the privilege for that to happen. I think that it's important we support it. People don't leave jobs because of pay. They leave jobs because of the environment. If they feel like it's an environment that is supportive of them, they're going to stay. They stay in a career in an area where they know that the people who are making decisions have their backs, which is why I feel that it is extremely important, as well as the mental health care for our first responders. I, I was almost moved to tears seeing how important it was to our fire department last week. I think that it was one of the best things that we did as a council, was to recognize, again, that our employees don't leave because of money. They leave because they don't feel supported. This gives them that support. And finally, I disagree with spending any more money on the lawsuit, even transferring it over. We have other uses. And to save us time during public hearings, I support the public hearing for changing the zoning.
Your time is up. Michael Fornino?
I thought, did you have a question, Ms. Gonzalez? I hadn't seen your name.
Mr. Michael Fornino. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
A matter of priorities. When we're talking about the homeless shelter, we'll concede the fact that if the homeless shelter didn't apply for the funds, well, that's a lack of effort on their part. However, if we can set aside a million or two for a project that doesn't even exist yet, with Arbor of Hope, I mean, it just, it's another case of lack of foresight, lack of understanding, and lack of planning. $100,000 that's being spent on this marijuana lawsuit could easily be going toward homeless shelter that we do have, and is needed, and is in use. So, once again, we have priorities out of whack. When we're talking about this marijuana lawsuit, again, we're going to lose. Anybody here who thinks that we have, and it's based on their interpretation of a law, there's nobody who sits in this room with a black robe that is entitled to interpret law. That's a judge's job. Our job is to obey the law, enforce the law, and maybe set a local ordinance, but we do not, as a city, have the authority. Marbury versus Madison, Law School 101, pre-law, and basic history, Ms. Clements. You should be pounding that into folks. When it comes to that, we don't have the authority. Ground Game Texas, who brought this grand idea, Julie Oliver, Mr. Francis, Robert Francis O'Rourke, who loves Texas so much, is now going to go teach in Chicago, organization largely funded and supported by, both directly and indirectly, by George Soros. There's a name a lot of folks have heard. For all those who like to stand on religious morals and everything else, if you don't know who George Soros is, and who he was, and how he became what he is, during the Holocaust, he denied that he was a Jew. He had a family that was lucky enough to scoop him up and say, oh, no, this is a good little Catholic boy.
Mr.?
This is going to, the funding for the lawsuit and the intent behind it.
Mr. Fornino. A history lesson is not on the agenda.
You're supporting the lawsuit.
You can talk about the lawsuit, but...
And I think it's important that the council, everybody in this room, understand...
They can look them up later, but right now, just, come on, stick to the agenda.
Well, my, while you interrupt me, my time keeps ticking down. We've been down this road before.
I will let you get those 10, 20 seconds back.
Madam Mayor, I underst, I think it's important that the people in this room understand the intent and the people behind the lawsuit.
This is not a history lesson. Please, just talk about the marijuana.
Okay. It is a wrong idea funded by a man who is in the wrong from the youth of his life, okay? A man who made his money to help fund the effort to get this lawsuit where we're at, okay? We're going to tie this all together, okay? He's an evil man, who made his living as a young boy, went around, delivered the deportation notices to fellow Jews. After they were deported, he made his money by looting their houses.
Okay.
That's who, anybody who supports this, okay? It is wrong from the beginning. You can pat, pad down my microphone. It's not going to keep me quiet, okay? The Herald and you tried this yesterday, with pulling down my comments off the paper in real time on YouTube.
Mr. Fornino, I'll give you one more warning to stay on the agenda, and it's over. So, please stay on the agenda.
Lawsuit yourself.
Well, okay. Thank you. Diane? Alberto?
Alberto.
Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Hello. I just want to pray for y'all. That's, that's what I'm here for, for the homeless crisis that we have coming upon us. And I forgot my glasses, so I got to put these on. So, if you want to join me in this, if your head's bowed, that'd be great. Lord Jesus, I pray for your provision for our righteous implementation of the robust 2022 homeless mental health strategic plan, that you, Lord Jesus, will bless and empower your Holy Spirit of righteousness within our hearts, and turn our minds to do your goodwill. Lord, guide us in your wisdom and holiness and passion to give due diligence, to see the outcome of charity and hope of your loving kindness towards all of your creation. Lord, let us come together with temple, that we will see the opening of the Arbor of Hope West Campus, and continue in Operation Rise, the righteous and moral implementations that you manifest in our leadership and responsibilities to adopt, lead, and put forth. Lord Jesus, I pray for your blessing of righteous, moral, and professional blend of responsiveness in our hearts, that turns us away from all corruption and subversion against your commandments and virtues. Lord, give us true compassion towards the homeless, that your passion in us renders the truth and way to overcome the weakness and challenges that threaten to leave our neighbors, friends, families, and ourselves destitute. Lord Jesus, open our eyes unto the good you have surrounded and blessed us with. Help us to surrender unto you, King Jesus, our Savior and our healer. Help us to come together unified unto your good name, and that you will have victory over us in the lost and dying world. Lord, we need you. We need your righteousness, guidance, and comfort, that we will be good encouragers, good leaders, good neighbors, as you have commanded us to be. In closing, I want to say, I know the church that I attend would have answered the call to any help in this matter at any time, but no one, no one asked. No one asked us. But we would not have, we would not have done it in wickedness. We would have done it in the goodness, in, in righteousness. I pray that we will look, I pray for you all. I'm praying for all of us, those people out there, all of us, our friends, our families, our neighbors. I pray for all of you, all the time. And I know many people are. I know my churches. I'm praying for the corrections and meet the honest efforts. I'm praying that we are seeking all resources and provisions to empower in an evil way, toward a righteous outcome together, that with each other, with our community, and our partnership of Temple, Belton, Nolanville, Fort Hood, and most, most of all, in a righteous relationship with our Lord Jesus Christ. And last, I want to say, I want to bless you all. Bless us all. I want to say, may the glory of our heavenly Father be received. May the peace of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, be upon us. May his Holy Spirit lead and counsel us.
Ma'am, your time is up.
May we all receive Jesus Christ for salvation for all of our sins.
Ma'am, you can request another minute from the council to continue to pray.
I just had a few seconds more.
Okay. Counsel, is that okay with you? Okay, you can finish.
May we all receive Jesus Christ for salvation of all our sins, that we will overcome death eternally. Amen.
Amen. All right. Thank you. Ms. Anka? Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm going to speak on the marijuana ordinance and the lawsuit. Drugs are very dangerous. People who have possession of, and are under, or are under the influence of drugs, can be unpredictable and very dangerous. Police officers have been killed while dealing with people involved in drugs. Even an unarmed person can kill a police officer, if the right circumstances occur, especially if the drugs are involved. It only takes a split second for someone to turn violent and hurt an officer. I have said this before. When you see the headline, "Police Officer Shoots and Kills An Unarmed Person," it doesn't mean anything without all the details. That person could easily turn violent, especially if they are under the influence of drugs. I have seen a dash cam video of an officer getting killed by a so-called unarmed person. It takes a special person to be willing to handle this kind of danger. When an officer pulls somebody over, they don't know if that person is selling drugs, or if they're on their way to a Bible study. Section 2284 of the marijuana ordinance says, "The city manager and chief of police shall ensure the Colleen police officers receive adequate training." I have a little bit of an issue with that. Madam Mayor, given the length of, lengthy history of the city manager avoiding answering questions and facing uncomfortable questions...
Ms. Anka, the lawsuit?
It's, it's in the ordinance. City manager is in the ordinance. By, by ordinance, city manager is supposed to be involved in teaching police officers how to, and for, do drugs, okay? If the city manager is afraid of answering questions from somebody like me or others, he should not be allowed to advise police on how to deal with drug dealers. Where there are drugs, there are drug dealers. I believe that that will be detrimental, not just to public safety, but also to the safety of the officers. And Madam Mayor, I'm sure you care about the safety of police officers. Section 2285 of the ordinance says that Colleen police officers may be disciplined. Hypothetically speaking, let's say an officer disregards the ordinance and arrests someone in possession of 3.5 ounces of marijuana, and there's no other felony. That's it. Hypothetically speaking, what is the harshest level of discipline that officer could face? Job loss, suspension? What would that be? And since there is no punishment for possession of marijuana in the city of Colleen, obviously, drug dealers are going to take advantage of this, because they're not dumb. This is a place to sell drugs. It's perfect. And the same with children who want to experiment. My question to you, how is the city going to protect children from the harmful effects of marijuana? They can legally possess marijuana right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anka. Patsy Bracy. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
I'm Patsy Bracy, and I want to clarify something, mayor. I had no intention to come into the podium. I was getting to address this gentleman here. I'm a representative of the SEDAC, and I was going to tell him where he needed to go. Councilman Alvarez had asked for a representative. He did not see me. But that was my whole intention, was to get his attention, so I could find out, to get him that information, to find out why he did not get the SEDAC money.
But, Mrs. Bracy...
And I'm sorry.
No, he was asking for a representative from Family, Friends in Crisis.
I'm sorry?
Friends in Crisis. He was asking for a rep...
But he came, Family in Crisis, um, came for money.
That's what Councilmember Alvarez asked for.
But they get SEDAC money, right, Mr.?
Right. To clarify, I was asking for a representative from the shelter.
For Family in Crisis. I apologize.
Yes, ma'am. No worries. Yes, ma'am, no worries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, no problem. Mr. Don Smith. Good evening, sir, you have four minutes.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Attorney, council members, I think it's a big mistake to close this homeless center, shelter. One of the things I did when I first moved here from Louisiana after I got them squared away, was I volunteered to work in the soup kitchen. Why? Because I wanted to find out about the homeless problem firsthand, because I'm involved with a building downtown that, and it was interesting to me. Some of those people, in my opinion, were really hurting, and they need our help. Some were hurting, but they didn't realize it, and they didn't want anybody to help us. And then some, unfortunately, are criminals. And if we want, going right to the point, if we want the downtown area to grow, we have to control the homeless situation. I've had several incidents, one when I caught someone slipping into my building, and I had the very Christian way escort them out of the building. And I, at one restaurant I went to, they had to close the restroom because the homeless people were using it for showers. And my fear is, if we close that shelter, that situation is just going to get worse. Now, my understanding of the law is, if we offer a homeless person that is on public land, a facility that is better than what they're currently doing in a tent, they can be either moved into that or moved off the, the property. And some of these people really need help, but they're, they don't realize it. It was amazing, some of the things that went on in that soup kitchen, that was a, a real experience for me. I also talked to two people. One of them has been involved with the homeless situation for 30 years here, one 20 years, and they told me that one of the reasons HEB closed was homeless people bothering the customers. Now, we're trying to get a restaurant to come here, I don't know if that's true, I assume it is, or they wouldn't have told me, but this problem needs to be dealt with. And in my opinion, one of the best ways to do it, obviously, is have some kind of a controlled shelter that these people can go to and get help, but at the same time, protect all the rest of us from the small number that are doing things that they shouldn't do. So again, I recommend that we try, try to help find funds for this shelter because of the impact it's going to have on all of us, the impact it's going to have on getting a grocery store, and, and, and proving our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Do anyone want to speak after Councilwoman Gonzalez before I speak?
I just, I just want to make it abundantly clear that I completely agree with the sentiment here, and there's no doubt that people are hurting, and we want to not have that happen and not have this shelter close and displace people. That is not our intent. The city is not in conversations about closing down the shelter, that is not the intent. I appreciate the energy here, but my challenge, again, you'll hear, I've been saying this for a very long time, my challenge is the source. So Friends in Crisis is responsible, it's their mission and their vision. You need to be there holding them accountable to that board for their fundraising efforts. Are they doing what they're supposed to be doing for the people that need their services? That's their mission and vision. We are going to do what we can as a city, and I think that we all, we all believe in the help, it's there, we, we believe in that, we care about our people. But at the end of the day, you've got churches, you've got nonprofits, you've got other organizations, that, that's their mission and their vision. So my challenge is to champion, but also let's look at Friends in Crisis and hold them accountable. What's going on with those funds? How do we prevent them from closing their doors? They're the ones running that operation, right? Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for your, your comments and your concern. I did want to clarify that it's not the city considering to closing the shelter, it's not our shelter, so it's not our decision. And you brought up the soup kitchen, I'm glad you did, because the soup kitchen is another absolute great and much-needed resource in our community, and they have been working for decades in this community, and they don't receive any money from the city. So, you know, it comes back to these nonprofits, they start on a mission, the city is there to help them get on their feet, which we have, we helped them get into the building that they're in, we helped them do the renovation to that building, we've helped them with providing for caseworkers and social workers in the past, but at the end of the day, there's only so much that a city, a municipality that, that can do. You know, it, it all goes back to, if we want to fund all the nonprofits in Colleen, let's do it, I'd be all for it, but how are we going to pay for it?
Thank you all. The unsheltered population is a part of the city of Colleen. You are a part of us. The resources and the funding, even if we would have given $30,000, that's a drop in the bucket with an operation that is ramped 50,000, 50,000 a month. What's going to happen the rest of the year? It's bigger than us giving 30,000, it's bigger than that. And, and it's a lot of things will be said against this council as if it's our fault, but what we have to do is work together for a solution, because no one should be without a place to stay. So if the council agree, whatever we can do to help, and I don't know the solution because Mr. Kager's not here, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of the council, but it breaks my heart that, I know it's not our responsibility, but however, something has to be done. And I'm not saying we're giving money, because it's, it's a council decision, this is just my opinion, but it falls on the shoulders of the board, and, and I still stand by that. And when you come before us and say, and request money from the city, most people are going to say, "The city of Colleen owns or runs the shelter." We just don't. And we have a lot of organizations, it's nonprofit, that come before us, and they, some of them have not received funding from the city, but they are doing excellent jobs in the community, because they know where, how to go out and get the resources. It's just like a nonprofit or any other business you own, you know you're going to take a risk, so you have to set aside and manage your, your revenue in a way to carry you out through that year. And if you see mid-year that you just don't have enough revenue to go into next year, you have to do something. And it breaks my heart, because the individuals that live in the shelters are here, but I don't see the board, and that saddens me. Any more comments from the council? Thank you. We would now have discussion item. Council, you have three minutes to speak three times. Madam Secretary.
DS 23091, discuss the K-Tempo Safe Streets and Roads for all SS 4A grant.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is a continuous item also on the K-Tempo Policy Board Meeting, we just had it, the last one was last week. As, the last update we got was that we are moving forward, but the more input that we as a council do, and then any citizens do, I'll send to the city secretary, the city manager's secretary, the, the next webinar is September 27 at noon. If we even sign in, that counts towards us participating, and we get credit towards getting this grant towards the city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
Melman 23023, consider minutes of special city council meeting of September 5, 2023. RS 23144, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment reports for the quarter ended July, June 30, 2023. RS 23145, consider memorandum resolution ratifying a meet and confer agreement with Colleen Police Employee Association, FOP Lodge 32. RS 23146, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for design of the passenger terminal mechanical improvements project at Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport in the amount of $293,200. RS 23148, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2344 for the terminal demolition project at Skylark Field Airport to R&amp;L Global Incorporated in an amount of RS 23149, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the agreement with the Waste Management Incorporated for the disposal of the city's municipal solid waste. RS 23150, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the agreement with ACOMAL Transportation LLC for transportation of the city's municipal solid waste. RS 23151, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the award of bid number 2341, wastewater improvements for Chaparral Road Project to RE, Argarejo Corporation with a contract in the amount of $2,729,604. RS 23152, consider memorandum resolution to approve an inter-local mutual aid agreement between the cities of Colleen and Nolenville for fire department services. RS 23153, consider memorandum resolution toward RFQ 2329, Fire Department Mental Health Clinician to A&amp;L Solutions in the amount of $45,000 annually. RS 23154, consider memorandum resolution of support for the selection of Relhead Energy Resiliency as the FY 2024 Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant Project.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. One of the questions that were asked was any council member have any relationships or relatives or friends that's on one of those committees? All right, with that being said, Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Segarra.
Mayor, I second that.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Motion carries six to zero with Mayor Pro Tem cop not voting on the item. Resolutions, council, you have three minutes to speak three times each. Madam Secretary.
RS 23147, consider a memorandum resolution renaming the Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport.
Counselor, Mr. Wilson, do you have anything you want to present new?
No, ma'am, I do not, I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay, Counselor Mr. Wilson, thank you, Mr. Wilson, and good evening. Mr. Wilson presented last week, do you have any, okay. Councilmember Segarra.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the committee to rename the Fort Hood, Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport to the Greater Colleen Fort Hood, excuse me, Greater Colleen Regional Airport, there you go, which is, what was it, the?
It was Colleen Regional Airport, and it was Greater Colleen Regional Airport.
Yeah, there you go. My thing, it says, uh, number one, Greater Colleen Regional Airport.
Okay.
Is it number one, and we get that straight?
Yeah. Well, two options, so you want that option. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Segarra to rename the airport Greater Colleen Regional Airport. Can I get a second only? Raise your hand, because we got a lot of people. We have a second by Councilmember Alvarez. Council, thank you, sir. Councilmember Solomon.
That's okay.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll make a statement.
Yes, sir.
I sincerely appreciate, I mentioned this last week, the work that's gone into the name suggestions. I personally am just not convinced yet, based on the information provided, how the inclusion of greater in the name will contribute to the economic prosperity for additional customers at this time. Colleen Regional Airport is clear and is concise. I like it because it effortlessly informs that there is a regional airport in Colleen, it's simple. On the other hand, Greater Colleen Regional Airport is a bit of a mouthful and a bit redundant. The mayor did make a great point last week, of which I concur. The name Colleen should be the first word in the airport name, in alignment with the comprehensive plan. If you think about existing and surrounding airports, you can reference Dallas Love Field, Houston Hobby, Chicago O'Hare, Waco Regional Airport, Charlotte Douglas, Boston Logan, they prioritize the name at the beginning. So my appeal to the council members is, this is a rare opportunity to rename our airport, and it does, this doesn't happen commonly across the nation. I do think we should provide the world with an airport name that's clear and concise and easy to reference. I feel it would be most appropriate to include greater in the future after we undergo a major airport expansion, because this way we'd also have a second opportunity to market the airport, something to take into consideration. Either way, how the council determines, I will support it with the airport being in my district, but I am going to make an amendment to the motion, and that amendment is going to be to name the current Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport, the Colleen Regional Airport.
Is there a second to the amendment? Raise your hand, please. Councilmember Solomon, second the amendment to name the current airport, the Colleen Regional Airport. Thank you both. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just had a question from a constituent that was posed, she's not able to be here this evening, but can you just restate, you told us what focus groups and how you all got to this point of the options of the names, can you just please reiterate that point for us?
Yes, ma'am. First off, we sent out surveys to our local stakeholders, area chamber commerces, local hospitals, educational entities in, in the area. We received over 80 different surveys back. We did intercept surveys, where we actually went out into the terminal, into the hall rooms, and talked to the folks that were actually using the airport. And so the information that we got back from combination of the surveys and the intercept surveys indicated what the most common names were. And as we stated last week, the most common name was, just name it, Colleen Regional Airport. The greater was added by the focus group once we began to discuss and the pros and cons of the, of the different names. And so that was why the greater name was recommended. However, I will reiterate that the most common, by far and away from the surveys, was Colleen Regional Airport. And as I stated last week, as the executive director of aviation, I could highly support either one of them, but that's, that's how we got to where we're at. We, we reached out to a large cross-section, the focus group was a cross-section of local area leaders, Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas College, Advent Hospital, several different chambers, and so that, all that information was taken, and that's how we came up with the two finalists.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez. Oh, did you want to speak? Okay, go to next. Councilmember Adams, no problem.
I just, real quick, and thank you again for the work that you guys did. It's good that we have two good choices, which confirms, I think, that there's a choice going to be made, so that's all I have, I'm calling for, I don't, do I, is it necessary to call for?
Well, you have to wait and let everybody speak.
Then I won't, thanks.
First. Anyone else want to speak? The, oh, I'll wait till you speak, and then I'll speak after you, because I haven't spoken. Anyone else, oh, you don't want to speak, or do you do? Councilmember Segarra.
Yes, and, and I'm okay with Councilmembers Boyd's recommendation, the only reason, and I think, and, and I'm, I was in a group a long time ago, but from my perspective, the only reason that I, I like the greater, it's because of our initials, GRK, and so I kind of attached that to it, you know, Greater Colleen- And so I kind of attached that to it, you know, Greater Colleen Regional Airport. And our initials, I think I mentioned this last week, I think fall in line now than they did before when it was Colleen Fort Hood, because I still, you know, scratching my head, figuring out, how does that align? That doesn't even match either. But now I think it's closer to our airport code, which is GRK, which is Greater Colleen. And so that's kind of why, you know, I like that Greater Colleen. But like you, I'm okay with either one.
Thank you for explaining that. And my only thoughts on this is that it goes back, everything from this day forward will go back to the comprehensive plan, and it's having our own identity. It's identifying who we are as a community, and Colleen, it needs to be first. And the other thing I took into consideration when you did the survey and you talked to the people that was in the airport, we're talking about a focus group. And greater, yeah, it would make us seem big, but right now, we're just trying to identify who we are as a community. So that's just my recommendation of Colleen Regional Airport. And with that being said, all in favor of the amendment of the Colleen Regional Airport? Vote yes, all opposed, no. The motion carries six to one with Councilmember Segarra in opposition. All in favor of the amendment with the original motion? Vote yes or no. Wait, that's our, do we have to go to, do I have to go to the original motion too?
You do need to vote. I realize in this situation, it seems a little duplicative, but the motion originally was to approve Greater Colleen Regional Airport. It was amended for that motion to be Colleen Regional Airport, and now you'll be voting on the original motion as amended, because you voted to amend that motion. So motion as amended is to name it Colleen Regional Airport.
That's it. So all in favor of that? Yes, all opposed, no? I know, it's tricky, but I've been up here for a while, so you have to vote on the original motion. Yes or no? The motion carries seven to zero, and the new name of our airport is Colleen Regional Airport. Mr. Wilson, thank you and your staff. Great job. Great job. We're simply the best.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for your support.
Thank you. That was a long process, but we made it. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff. Great job. And thank you, Attorney Clemmons. All right. Madam Secretary.
RS 23155, consider memorandum resolution approving a fireworks display application from Big Dog Pyro LLC on behalf of Advent Health Medical Center.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Chief Kobisky, good evening. What is the update?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The update for you is with the half inch of rain that we had over the weekend, with the current conditions of the wildland surrounding the fallout area for the fireworks, and the petitioners' agreement to have a brush truck on site during the shoot, and a fire marshal's office representative approved the shoot prior to actually shooting. So in case there's weather changes and conditions at the time of the shoot, which is about 8:00 p.m., we are recommending support for this resolution.
Thank you, Chief. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Mayor, there's been no motion made.
Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Mayor Protem.
I second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. I know, I'm moving. Someone need to vote. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Chief. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
RS 23156, consider memorandum resolution appointing members to vacant and unexpired terms on various boards and commissions.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Madam Secretary presented this last, Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I just have one quick update. I'm just going to sit over here, if that's okay, not coming up to the podium. The only update that I have from last week is for the Capitol Improvement Advisory Committee. Ms. Howard has indicated she is interested in being reappointed to the committee as a real estate developer. And then Dylan Whitis has also submitted an application to be considered for the vacant real estate developer position on the committee.
Thank you. Counsel, are you okay with that? Yes, 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 yes. Okay, can I get a motion? Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the appointments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Second.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
RS 23157, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the remainder of funds previously approved for fiscal year 2023 to defend the Bell County lawsuit related to marijuana enforcement be carried forward into FY 2024.
Counsel, Attorney Clemmons presented this last week. Can I get a motion? Councilmember Alvarez.
Move to approve RS 23-157 as presented.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem.
I second.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Solomon being in opposition. Public hearing. Counsel, you have three minutes to speak three times each. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23052, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the City of Colleen to adjust revenue and expenditure accounts in multiple funds. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Colleen, Texas, amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the City of Colleen to adjust revenue and expenditure accounts in multiple funds, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause, and establishing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Drake, do you have any updates?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown, Melissa Brown, Melissa Brown. Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion? Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Second that motion.
All in favor, yes. Someone needs to vote now. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Just a moment, Mayor.
Please have all your forms turned in prior, because we only have her here, and she has to read, she has to take notes, and she has to keep up with time, please, out of common courtesy.
Thank you, Mayor. PH 23053, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Bianca Hall on behalf of Rebecca Tinkshell, who is deceased, case number Z 2319, to rezone Lot 1, Block 2, out of the Morris and Good survey, from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The property is locally addressed as 801 East Avenue G, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of Lot 1, Block 2, out of the Morris and Good addition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Meschter, do you have it? Good evening, ma'am. You have any updates?
No, ma'am.
Counsel? All right. Public hearing is open. Anka, good evening. Welcome back. You have four minutes.
Madam Mayor, counsel, I'm for this, whatever the owner wants, whatever the property owner wants, I'm for it. I just want to make a couple of points. One is this is surrounded by B5 zoning. It'll be a single family surrounded by B5 zoning. That's one point. And one is it'll lose value, as far as I can tell, going from B5 as a business to a single family. I just, personally, I don't see the value of changing it from B5 to single family. But again, it's whatever the owner wants to do. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for that. That is what she wants to do. Public hearing closed. Councilmember Boyd.
Make a move, excuse me, make a motion to approve PH 23-053.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Alvarez.
Second that.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Mayor Protem. Motion carries seven to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn? I need you to speak in the mic, because Madam Secretary.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Madam Secretary?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Good job, counsel. Thank you all for coming. We see you next week. Well, we won't.